Taking sides because Bernie Sanders did not do well because people did not come out to vote for him. The secret to success in an election is you get out and vote. And I'm going to borrow a phrase from a good friend of mine who unfortunately has passed away, but it rings through my mind. If you don't vote, don't complain. That being said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to the little Nate Smith, who's going to read out the dignitaries who are present here this evening.
Good evening, Democrats. Okay, we have dignitaries. First, we have Leslie Schreiber, chief agent to Senator Sheriff Bradshaw. And then we have Major Chris Keen of the Sheriff's Department. And then we have Kamala Hunger, an intern for State Senator Rader. And then we have Sharon Artestman, candidate for Clerk of the Court and Controller. Then we have Michelle Sylvester, currently Palm Beach Soil and Water Conservation District Supervisor.
And running for Supervisor of Elections. Thank you.
And she's also running for Supervisor of Elections.
What is she running for?
Supervisor of Elections. Did anyone hear me? I said Supervisor of Elections. She's running for Supervisor of Elections. Okay. Then, of course, we have Karen Brill, who's running for the School Board in District 5, who's a member of the board in District 5, running for County Commissioner.
Okay, so I'll help. Karen Brill, I'm on the School Board, District 3, and I am running for County Commission, District 5. So it's a little confusing with the numbers, but the bottom line is they overlap, so they're basically the same district.
I apologize.
It's okay.
And of course, we have State Senator Maria Sykes, who's also running for County Commissioner.
Maria, did you want to say something?
Well, sure. Whenever you have a politician a chance to talk, I'm just very proud to be here in this club. I've been a member of this club for many, many years. I know Nate and everybody here, and Ed Saul, and all of the members. Because when it comes to finding real Democrats, you're going to find them right here at this organization. We've always been behind our party. That's why you have so many candidates here, because we know where to go to get support. So I want to thank all of you for being here, for being supportive, and especially for being good Democrats. Thank you very much.
Sure. Yes, you can do your school board thing.
Yeah, so I'm doing, I want to talk to you about something that's not about the race. I'm a little twisted. You can take that literally or figure it out.
The poor twisted. Hold on, let me help you out.
I think we're good now. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, so I want to start off by telling you, of course, I am your School Board member. This morning, I spoke at Delray Alliance about what the word that everyone's got on their lips right now, coronavirus, right?
Yep.
So what I told them was, a lot of people don't know that we are the largest employer in Palm Beach County, and we have almost 200,000 students. So we tell everybody, don't panic, but you really have to take it seriously. And so today, at our Board Workshop, we had the Health Department with us, and I want to share some information with you that you might not know, some things that I actually learned today. Because, you know, what I've been telling everyone is there's teachable moments, and what we're teaching right now for people to do to stay safe is really good for all the time, right? So, but what we learned today is that there are testing kits. You know how you've been hearing that nobody can be tested, there's no kits? Yes, there are. It's with the Health Department. So there's certain protocols that are out there for the kits to be distributed, to be used, and for them to be tested. So that's one important piece. And you'll learn more also if you watch the workshop on our website. But the important questions we asked, being that it's the school district, spring break is around the corner, right? So our students are going to be traveling, right? When they're traveling, they may be going to places where the virus is more prevalent, or they may be sitting on an airplane where they're exposed to the virus. So the question was asked, what do we do when we have our students coming back? So what we're told is it's 14 days, that's the magic number, for us to watch, for a person to watch, if you're not feeling well, it's 14 days. When the students come back, those that have been in areas that have the prevalence of the coronavirus, they'll be asked by the people who process them through, if they're coming through the airports, to have themselves stay in, and I forget the word, I'm so tired.
Self-quarantine.
Right, self-quarantine, thank you. Self-quarantine to watch, and the Health Department will check back with them, as they said. I know that you watched our meeting today, and it was very informative. So we tell everybody, do not panic, right? You can't panic. We are going to have cases, but what we need to do is be smart about it, and we need to make sure that we teach our students. My ask at that meeting was that we, for our older students, put together wraps for washing the hands, because they say you have to wash your hands in warm water for 20 seconds. That's singing "Happy Birthday" to you twice.
Slowly.
Okay, and slowly. Now, we were also told you could do it with the ABCs, but hey, if I'm a high school student or I'm a middle school student, I'm not going to be, you know, singing the ABCs. So we said, why don't we get some catchy tunes that we can have them learn to take the time to do that, and then continue it? Because it's very important that they have those types of hygienic habits, no matter what. And we'll see less flu, we'll see less infections, so let's learn from this experience. Thank you. And of course, as you know, I'm running for County Commission, and I'll bring that same enthusiasm to the County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like everyone to know, that our wonderful President, given his degree in epidemiology, advised everyone to just wait for the warm weather, and then the virus will disappear. Warm weather, that's all we need, guys. And then he appointed Mike Pence as the coronavirus czar because of his enormous background in epidemiology. Okay? So we're in terrible hands. But in any event, there was a newsflash that came from the White House, and it went sort of like this. It says, "A harrowing experience unfolded in the White House on Tuesday as Donald Trump screamed at Mike Pence for not praying hard enough to make Joe Biden lose the Super Tuesday primary contests." This is reliable sources. Witnesses to the vituperative dressing down of the Vice President report, that's a big word, vituperative. Everybody know what that means? You can tell me after the meeting. In any event, okay? Dressing down of the Vice President. That evening started badly after Trump saw the returns to Virginia when Biden won handily. Quote, "Mike, you were supposed to tell God to make Sleepy Joe lose," Trump snaps. "A lot of good your praying did." A credible President. We are so lucky. Any thoughts on that, guys? That comes from Mr. Borowitz, political satire. Everyone knows what satire is. Anybody doesn't? See me later. Okay. Well, tonight's meeting, okay, we were to have the Sheriff. Unfortunately, Leslie advised me that the Florida Department of Law Enforcement sent a message. And when you send a message from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement... Wait, will you stand up? Oh my God.
I want to see you.
Oh my God. You sorting out for me? All right. Okay, when the Florida Department sends a message, you go. So we are lucky enough to have Major Chris Keen with us tonight, and he's in his uniform, and he looks rather...
Handsome and dapper.
There you go, handsome and dapper. Okay. Major started with Palm Beach Sheriff's Office in 1994 at 12 years old? Maybe 14? Handsome young man. In any event, he now, okay, is in charge of the South Florida Bureau, which is 365-man-strong unit. What do you do with them?
That's part of my speech.
There you go. So this is a man who runs a very large department, has been very involved in law enforcement, has all sorts of awards. Yeah, all sorts of awards. And, okay, a master's degree at the University of Alabama, numerous advanced leadership courses, including the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association and the FBI National Academy Session 268. Major Keen has a time to be married, and you have two children. You're working hard, bud. Okay, come on up. Thank you so much.
Do I need the microphone? Can you hear me? You'd like me to use it? Well, thank you very much for that introduction. Appreciate it. So I want to talk today, well, first off, thank you for having me, on behalf of Sheriff Bradshaw. I want to talk a little bit about the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and what we're all about. Then I want to talk a little bit about the South Region, which I think many of you live. And then I want to talk a little bit about current crime trends, scams in particular, and some things that we can all do to try to create the safest environment that we can. So let me start out with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I'll start with a question. Does anybody have an idea about how many law enforcement agencies there are in the country? Approximately, police, sheriff, federal agencies? I got a 6,000. There's about 18,000 law enforcement agencies in the country. Out of that 18,000, there are only 49, 49 that have 1,000 or more sworn officers or deputies. Only 49. PBSO is one of those. So Palm Beach County, about 100, I'm sorry, about 1.5 million, about 1.5 million, about half of that is unincorporated. So a question that I get quite often, especially from our friends that have moved from New York or the Northeast, anybody here from New York, the Northeast? So a question that I get very often is, what does the Sheriff do? What is the Sheriff's Office all about? And it's very, and I've got family from New York, I've got family that were in the NYPD, I'm very in tune with that environment too, and for some reason, it's very hard to grasp the concept of the Sheriff, especially in Florida. California's built a little bit like this. Arizona is a little bit like this. So the Sheriff is the main law enforcement entity of the county, the largest, or not the largest, the main law enforcement entity. What that means is the Sheriff's Office has jurisdiction throughout the entire county. So does everybody know here, do you live in an unincorporated part of Palm Beach County? Or do you live in a municipality?
Unincorporated.
I know you live in unincorporated West Boca Raton. So a Sheriff in the state of Florida, although they have jurisdiction throughout the entire county, their primary patrol function is the unincorporated area. And that's a confusing bit of information for some people. So you can almost kind of, for the New Yorkers, you can almost kind of think of the County Sheriff as the state police for that county, where we have, we might cover towns and cities. So Palm Beach County, about 1.5 million, about half of that is still living in unincorporated parts of the county. So just that alone, we have the largest geographical area. In addition to that, PBSO, we contract with 10 cities to provide police service. So cities like Wellington, Royal Palm, Green Acres, Lake Worth Beach, the Three Glades Cities, Mangonia Park, Lake Park, those are examples of cities that contract with us to be their local law enforcement provider, in essence, their police department. So all said and done, we break up the county into 20 patrol districts, 20 patrol districts. And much like those from New York, you understand precincts. A district is basically just like a precinct. So what I like to say is that PBSO has all the attributes of one of those 49 largest police departments or agencies that has all the assets, the SWAT vehicles, the helicopters, the drones, the specialty investigative units, all those things that you would see in a large metropolitan law enforcement agency. But what we also have, by breaking the area down into smaller geographical areas, in essence, like in West Delray, we're District 4 here. Many of you here, District 4, that live here, you hear Captain Sant, or you've seen Lieutenant Morales. Those that live in West Boca, you see Captain Moss, and our new Lieutenant Johnson. We break that down into a reasonable geographical area with the same deputies working in that district, so they get to know the residents, they get to know the areas where there's areas of concern, they get to know the problem areas or the issue of that particular community. So what I like to think is that while we have those assets of a large law enforcement agency, we have that hometown police department. And in essence, as an example, District 4, Delray, we are your hometown police department for those residents in the unincorporated area of Delray. So I think we marry those two things quite well, and that's something that we constantly stress to our deputies, that that's something that we want to give that hometown police department feel. And we've been able to do that very successfully in the cities that we have merged with, like Lake Worth Beach, or Green Acres, or those that I mentioned earlier. So it might be something that you can go and ask your relatives, your neighbors, hey, do you know, like, where the boundaries are for the cities, where the boundaries are for the city of Delray Beach, which has a police department, versus the unincorporated area? And one of the things that you can do to, and I'll allude to this at the end too, when we're talking about things that you can do to protect yourself and create the safest environment, knowing where cities start and end and who your police department is, many times, I'll get a phone call, or we'll have someone come in and say, well, yeah, I need to talk to the Delray Beach Police Department. I say, well, where do you live? And they live close to 441. I said, well, you're about five miles from the city boundary of Delray Beach, so do you know where you really live at? And they're like, no, I don't know. So that's something that we all should really have a good grasp of. So the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, we break the county into about 20 patrol districts and three patrol regions. I'm in charge of one of those patrol regions, which is the South Region, which includes the city of Lake Worth Beach and basically everything from Lantana Road to Broward County. And we have two other regions. Yes, that's about 500,000 residents, and I think we're closer to about 400 dedicated employees. So that gives you kind of a snapshot of what PBSO is all about and what a county sheriff is all about in the state of Florida versus a police department. So I will tell you that we have a very good working relationship. I want to leave some time for a question, so if I start going long-winded here, please tell me, because I could keep going. One of the things we really work on, and you probably have seen in TV shows and movies where the FBI comes in, or a federal agency, or another police department comes in, and there's this kind of adversarial relationship between the two, we don't have that here. That's something that we're very proud of. So our neighboring police departments, like Boynton Beach, Delray Beach, Boca Raton, the smaller departments, we meet with them every month, face-to-face with the chief, assistant chiefs, and the command staff, to make sure that we know, we have everybody's phone numbers, we're constantly in communication with each other, because at the end of the day, our only goal here is to create the safest environment we can for our residents. There is no jurisdictional or adversarial relationship among that. So I think that's important for you to know, that we do take pride in that as well. While those cities have their own police departments, something that we end up doing quite often, especially for the smaller departments, is we provide a lot of support, because we are the largest agency. So some of the smaller police departments that we have in a county, how many cities do we have in a county? Anybody know? No, 39, 39 cities. So out of the 39, some like Haverhill, or the Village of Gulf, very small cities, they don't have their own police department, we provide police service. 10 cities, we provide police service. The rest, some are larger, like the city of West Palm Beach, full-service police department. Some of them are smaller, so if they have an incident that they don't have the expertise, then they call us and we come out and help them. So we're often in the cities, we're often leading task forces, because something I forgot to mention is generally, the city police departments, they don't have jurisdiction outside of their city, where we have jurisdiction everywhere in the county. So if we have, let's say, a multi-agency task force, many times, we lead it up because we can deputize those officers and they can have jurisdiction in the county. So there's a lot of moving parts. I guess the takeaway from that is, A, at PBSO, we really want to maintain that hometown police department feel. So I want you to know who your law enforcement agency is, I want you to know that that's something that's very important to Sheriff Bradshaw, and it's very important to me. But at the same time, if something serious happens, we have those resources, and we don't have to call anybody. Sheriff Bradshaw's been very, very serious about making sure that we have the resources for the deputies and for our community. And there's a lot of examples that I can go into to talk about that. One example that I'll mention very quickly, and it doesn't really have to do with equipment, has to do with people. Something that actually Sheriff Bradshaw recognized well before the tragedy that we had in Stoneman Douglas was the need to provide mental health services to our community, and some of you may know this, but really, our largest mental health provider is our county jail. That's our largest mental health provider in this county and in most counties. So before we had the tragedy in Stoneman Douglas, he recognized, we need to be proactive when we're dealing with people with mental health issues, because there aren't a lot of services. So you have law enforcement go out, and we have the authority to do what's called a Baker Act, which is a mental confinement for up to 72 hours, really, it's just to get that person stabilized, and typically, they're back out in the street. So what can we do as a law enforcement agency to take a proactive role in this? So he started our Behavioral Services Unit several years ago, and to the point now where we're getting agencies from all over the country coming in to take a look at how we're doing this. And the very short Reader's Digest version is, we're taking detectives that have special training, and coupling them with mental health, mostly therapists with master's degrees, licensed mental health workers, and they become a team, basically, and they go out when we get a call, or we get an alert from the community, or many different ways that we get noticed. We go out, we do a triage, so we have law enforcement to see if there's a crime, and we have this specially-trained mental health worker to evaluate the status of that person. And also, those individuals know the services that our community provides very well, they're all very seasoned veterans, they're not new to the community, and they can come up with a plan. Is this a criminal case, or is this something that the person needs mental health? And many times, it's they need mental health assistance. And then they create a plan to try to get those resources, and we'll even go back and follow up and keep checking and keep checking, because we all know that many times, an individual maybe who's on medication, they stop taking their medication because they start feeling better, and they don't think they need it, and then a week later, their behavior is erratic, and they're starting to become a concern to the community, their neighbors, their family. And so we have to keep tabs on these individuals. And so that's a program that we have now, it's very well-staffed, and it's, in my opinion, it's creating an environment where we're proactively avoiding situations in what is a very challenging environment. As many of you know, working with mental health, really challenging environment. So I think we're doing something that's really unique, I think it's having a positive impact, and I'm very proud of that. So that's an example of something that we're doing as an agency proactively, and something that we're spending money on. So that's a little snapshot of PBSO. I want to leave some time for some questions, because I'm sure you all have some of those. I want to talk a little bit about crime, especially in the south end of the county. We have a problem, and it's historical, we always have a problem with car burglaries, and to a lesser degree, residential burglaries. Car burglaries and stolen vehicles, that's a big deal for us. People are basically refusing to lock their cars, they're refusing to remove valuables from, at least, I'll use the word refusing, because that's what it seems like. If you could help me out and keep preaching that message that at least removing valuables from cars would be very beneficial for us. And also, if you see something, please, the number one way that we catch burglars specifically is a neighbor seeing something suspicious and calling us. I'll give you a very brief example, and this goes to that crime prevention topic. During our hurricanes a couple of years ago, where we had, a lot of people left their communities, left the county, in preparation for the storm, they boarded up their houses. So we had a family that notified their neighbor, hey, we're going to be leaving, we're going to go to Orlando. They boarded up their house. So their neighbor knew that they weren't going to be there. After the storm, and when I say after the storm, the winds aren't down yet, but when the sun came up, or just about, the neighbor looks out and sees some young guys walking around the back of the house. Point number two, and this is something I hear quite often, I didn't want to bother you, I didn't want to bother you. No, that's what we're here for, you need to bother us. She picks up the phone and she calls us. Now, unfortunately for them, when we have a hurricane or a natural disaster or something like that, what we do is we take all our detectives, the people that work in specialty units, all these people that we have that have various jobs, and they come out and work patrol, because we need boots in the ground, we need people out there during those kind of situations. So very bad timing for these individuals, because within a couple of minutes, we had probably 30 deputies, canines, everything you can imagine surrounding this neighborhood, and we ended up catching these guys who were out breaking into houses literally hours after a storm had passed. I couldn't really think of, you know, a meaner thing to do to these people. So I'm glad to say we caught them. Number one reason we caught them was because a neighbor knew, to be alert, felt comfortable enough, knew who their law enforcement agency was, knew that we wanted to get a call from them, felt comfortable enough to call us, and we had the resources to be able to catch them. So that's a little bit of a crime prevention tip on burglaries. That's the number one way we catch burglars, is someone calls in a suspicious person. Well, right, yes.
Is that a 911 call?
That is a 911 call. If you see somebody, and that's a good question, because I get that often, when should I call 911? When should I call our non-emergency line? If someone's in danger, or you think a crime's about to happen, call 911. We want that information, we want to know, and it's a priority for us. Someone breaking into a house or car is a serious crime to us, and we want to know about it. The other crime that I want to talk a little bit about, and by the way, I have a bunch of crime prevention information up here, and I want to talk a little bit about that, and I want to talk about an event that we have coming up that I want to invite everybody to. Something that is very frustrating to us, our heart really goes out to these victims because they're being taken advantage of, and that's scams related to identity theft. And more prevalent, just phone calls, calls. So we, and some of you may have been at Delray Alliance this morning, and Captain Sant, who is in charge of our West Delray District, talked about it. Just an example from a couple of days ago, where a person called, and you can fill in a blank on the story, but when you have somebody who self-initiates a call to you, something that you have not, something that you have not inquired about, something that you have not proactively gone out for, and you get a cold call from somebody, and they, like in this case, they said that they were with the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Agency, and they needed money to clear up. And I use kind of generic examples, because you can fill in the blanks. If you can think it, you might get a call on this. You've won money. You have a family member that is in jail. Your identity is stolen, and they need money to fix it. Keep going, keep going. You're under investigation, and they need money to clear it up. Anything that you can think of that you got a phone call on, I'm going to tell you, and I don't talk in definitive very often, it's a scam, it's a scam. Don't answer the phone unless, now, if I could get away with this, I wouldn't answer my phone. Unfortunately, I can't get away with that. If you're in a situation where you can let it go to voicemail, let it go to voicemail. If you get a call that you haven't inquired about first, it's probably a scam. If you want to donate to a charity, you donate, you reach out to them. You don't wait for them to call you, and then you give them money. If anybody ever asks for a gift card for payment for something, that's a scam. If you get an email that says you want something, that's a scam. If you get a phone call that says you want something, that's a scam. Here's my, I hope you guys are getting my message, they're all scams. Hang up. Don't answer it. Delete it. Anything you can do to avoid contact with that person. It's very challenging for law enforcement to arrest, to identify the suspect and make arrests, because sometimes they're overseas, sometimes they're calling from who knows where, they're spoofing phone numbers, they are having IP addresses that come back, there's just no way of tracking them. So the best thing to do is not to answer the phone if you don't recognize the number, hang up. If you happen to... If you happen to get a call, and you're like, you know what, I need to check this out, hang up, call your bank. If, like, I'll give you an example of a scam that's going on now. Someone will call you and say, I'm with your bank. And they'll have just enough, and these people are good, they're very good, they're able to get information out of you sometimes without you even knowing it. They'll give you enough to think that they're legit. A very common scam that we've actually made arrests on, thank goodness, all the way up, the leaders in Georgia, and we just arrested them with the Secret Service two weeks ago. They'll call you and say, I'm with Bank of America. Your credit card, your debit card have been compromised. I'm coming to your house, and I'm going to take custody of your card, and I will then return a card to you. That's the level of customer service that we give. And people are falling for this on a daily basis. People will come into the neighborhood, they're very well dressed, they're very well spoken, they take the credit card, and they either go up somewhere, or they use the credit card number and buy something online, have it delivered somewhere. This is happening day in and day out. It took us a long time to finally catch them, they're very good, and we have, like I said, we made an arrest in, outside of Atlanta. Our concern is that this crew has, this style of crime has kind of permeated to other people, and so now we're experiencing it more and more. That's one we're seeing a lot. Another one that we've seen here in this community and others in South Florida, someone will come to your door and say they're with whatever, the homeowner association, the water department. And that's another reason that you should know where you live and what jurisdiction. If someone comes to your house and says, I'm with the Delray Beach Water Department, I need to go check in the backyard, well, if you know that you live in unincorporated and you don't get water or garbage or whatever from them, you know right off the bat, this might be a scam. So they'll go knock on the door, they'll say, I'm with so-and-so, and I need to do whatever, maybe in your backyard, can you show me where your fence is, can you show me whatever? And while you walk them back there, someone else is in your house stealing your stuff. My message to you, and it goes back to the phone calls, the emails, or someone knocking on your door, it's okay to say no. Someone knocks on my door, and I didn't get a notice from my HOA, or I didn't know that they were coming to do this, it's okay not to answer the door, it's okay to say no. Call your property manager and ask, do we have something going on in the community? It is okay to say no in those situations. It's okay to hang up and verify, it's okay to not open the door and call and verify. That's the message that I'm really asking for you all to get out to your friends, to your neighbors. We're all very trusting people, and someone knocks on our door and says, well, I need to check the water meter in your backyard, many people are, sure, let's go. And that's what's happening. That's kind of a seasonal crime, that we have people that kind of drive through the community and they keep going other places. So those are examples. I guess the overarching theme that I want to give you, though, is it's okay for you, if you haven't initiated, it's okay for you to say no. It's okay for you not to react, not to respond to those kind of inquiries. So with that in mind, I have some information here that you can take, and also, some of this on our website. Identity theft is a big issue, there's some information there. I was reading a report the other day that basically said everyone, all of us, have had their identity stolen. We've all had our identity stolen. Everybody, basically, in the United States has had their identity stolen. We just don't know when it's going to be used fraudulently. Many times, that information, there's some stuff here about the three credit bureaus that you can go, well, one of them was hacked. So that information was out there. So it's a real challenge, it's a real challenge. Again, you got to be savvy about your accounts, and on top of those kind of things, and being very careful. So we've all probably had our identity stolen, it's just a matter of when that information is going to be used in a criminal enterprise of one sort or another. So it's not doom or gloom. I'm going to end on what I think is, well, it is a positive note, and then I want to open the floor for some questions. So has anybody lived here, let's say, 20 years? Anybody lived here 20 years, in Palm Beach County? Anybody lived here 20 years? So let's go back 30 years, anybody lived here 30 years? So let's go back to, say, 1989, 1990. Do you think that the crime in Palm Beach County since, let's say, 1990, has the crime gone up, or has it gone down? Overall crime in the county? Up? Anybody? You think it's gone up? It's gone, gone, I got one down. So this isn't PBSO stats, this is the Palm Beach County Criminal Justice Commission has looked at crime in Palm Beach County, and the population has gone up about 50%. The population's gone up 40 to 50%. The crime, and this isn't per capita data, this is raw numbers, has gone down about 40%. Believe it or not, the crime has gone down about 40%. And I'm talking robberies, burglaries. So many times, we get the impression, and that doesn't mean to put, let your guard down, it doesn't mean be aware of your surroundings, that doesn't mean that we can't, that we have to still be vigilant, but I want to leave you with this good news, that in reality, in reality, crime is down, and significantly down, significantly down. Those that are from New York, you know what New York City's crime rate has been in the last 25, 30 years, the dramatic decrease in crime in New York City. Now, one word of caution, some of you may keep track of what's going on in New York City. Crime is up in New York City in the last six months to a year. And New York, it seems to be a little bit of a bellwether city. Crime started going down a little sooner in New York, and more dramatically in New York City, before it kind of caught on with the rest of the country. I'm concerned that that might be the inverse occurring now, so we'll have to see, we'll have to see, but crime in New York City is up. But the numbers have been reduced dramatically in the last 30 years. So I'm happy to say that those raw numbers are down, and that's something that, you know, if we keep watching the news every day, it's hard to believe, but that is the fact. So, questions? Yes, sir?
Major Keane, you're not an elected official, correct?
I am not.
Right, but you graciously agreed to represent Sheriff Rick Bradshaw, who is an elected official. So since this is a political club, could you give us a little background, how long he served as sheriff? Is he a partisan, is he a Democrat, and so on? And is he term limited? And fill us in, because I'm sure if he were here, he would have said that, so people should get to know him better.
So, I don't want to get into too much politics, and I'll just say a few facts. So I've been with the sheriff's office now for 20, going on my 26th year. Sheriff Bradshaw has been sheriff now, I think he's moving into his fourth term. Sheriff in the state of Florida is not term limited. They've gone back and forth on the partisan race, and...
Currently nonpartisan?
Currently, I believe it is.
It's partisan.
It's partisan, it's partisan.
He's a Democrat.
Yeah.
He's a Democrat.
He's a Democrat. So what else I can say is that I'm very proud to work for Sheriff Bradshaw, I'm very proud to work for Palm Beach County, and he has been really a godsend for the department since he started. So I'm very happy to be here representing him today.
Where is the city limit if you're going east on Atlanta from, say, Military?
So generally, Military Trail is probably the easiest way, but I will tell you that if you, the easiest thing I can tell you is when you get home tomorrow, or you get home tonight, tomorrow, take a look at a, pull it, Google it, pull up a map, because the boundaries for many of our cities, Delray included, is very jagged, very jagged. And one of the, and take a look at Green Acres, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. One of the questions I get quite often is, how do you know, if I call 911, how do you know where to go? How do you know which agency? So that's something that we deal with quite often in our commo, our communications people are very, very in tune with that. So a lot of us are only carrying cell phones. Generally, the cellphone will go to the nearest tower, and that tower will kind of evaluate that and send it to what they think is the nearest police department. But our communications officers are very, very good, very in-depth at asking where you at, where you at, and they figure it out. It's something that they're able to seamlessly move those calls around to the proper jurisdiction. So that's, that kind of goes part and parcel with that question. But take a look at a map, you'll see the boundaries of our cities in Palm Beach County, and what the unincorporated parts are. I think it'll surprise you to see how much is unincorporated still. Yes, ma'am?
What agencies, law enforcement agencies, what law enforcement agencies, I don't know if this is working. Are solicit residents for their officers, organizations that support law enforcement?
Zero, zero. If you get a call from some organization that says the Fraternal Order Police, and we want a donation, if you want, many of those are legitimate organizations. So if you want to make a donation to that organization, hang up, contact them directly. That's the best answer I can give you. If you want to make a donation to an organization, you do it. You don't have someone else contact you, and you translate through them. Is that? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, but I also, I'd like to get your, yeah, I'd like to get your opinion on something that I do. I, let alone, and there are times when I do answer my door and open the door, and I am in the habit, when I, as I open my door, I turn my head and I shout, I've got him, honey. So that it seems like there's somebody else in the house. But my question is, what is the responsibility when dealing with gated communities, most of which have some sort of security of their own, and where does your responsible authority lie? And what does the homeowner do? Do they contact their local, their people on site, or you?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, because it can get a little confusing. So an HOA is basically just any neighborhood. We have jurisdiction in an HOA, a gated community, to investigate crimes. Now, if it's, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but if it's a community that has private roads, then we have an issue with enforcing traffic, basically what are called traffic infractions. So like, say, a stop sign, because sometimes it's a non-DOT approved, it might be a wooden stop sign, it's not the right height and stuff. So we may not be able to enforce in a probably gated community traffic infractions, like running a stop sign. But a crime, any crime, sure, we have jurisdiction to investigate, just like any other community, just like any other community. And I think your technique is pretty good, it's pretty good. Now, if you live in a gated community that has maybe a policy that you're going to get notified before someone comes in and knocks on your door, if someone knocks on my door without me knowing, that's a red flag for me. So I'm going to be a little more cautious if I'm going to answer that door or not. Yes, sir?
I'm really impressed that you included in your talk to us the fact that you are the biggest mental, the sheriff's office is the biggest mental health provider. That's just staggering, and where we are, that's a statement. I do have a question about police stops. Does the department track all stops, you know, beyond tickets and arrests, to be able to really know who is being stopped in the county?
Yeah, that's a very interesting question, and yeah, so if we do a traffic stop, or we get a call that there's a suspicious person, and we meet up with them and interact with them, we do some documentation, and that documentation includes their descriptors, and that is officially filed. So the short answer is yes, we do.
A few years ago, the county was adopting the text to 911 system, so that if you're in, say, a hostage situation hiding in a closet, you can silently summon help.
Right.
How well has that been adapted to police work, and can you cite any anecdotes of where it's saved lives?
Yeah, so I don't know, the short answer is, we have tried to keep up with technology. We being law enforcement in general, and specifically PBSO. So we have situations where you can text to 911, we have SeeSomethingSaySomething app, where you can send basically equivalent message directly. We have a similar version for schools, so schools, students in schools can do that, and I'll give you a tangible example of that. So we try to stay up with technology, because as we all know, all you need to do is stop at the next light, and you'll see everybody texting or looking at their phone. So we know that that's a big way that people communicate. So we try to make it as easy as possible. The good old way of picking up a phone and calling 911 is the best, because we can get the most information, but if that person can't do it for one reason or another, we want to give them the availability. So I'll give you a quick example if I have time. We're really trying to solicit information from students. So Palm Beach County, one of our law enforcement agencies is the School District Police Department. So you may not know this, but the school district has their own police department. But we work very closely with them in a lot of different ways. And one of the ways we work with them is, the students have basically a SeeSomethingSaySomething style app, so they can text us, they can basically send that information to us anonymously, or if they want to give information, whatever amount of information they want. So as an example, yesterday, one of our local high schools, a student sent a disturbing social media message to a group, a closed group of friends. So it wasn't sent out to the universe, it was sent out to a closed group of friends. One of the friends was courageous enough to say, this is disturbing, and so he sent it to us on that app. Our Behavioral Services that I mentioned earlier, detective, mental health worker, contacts the school district, we meet all together, we meet with that kid, we interview that kid, we evaluate the situation, and right then and there, we're planning a course, what's the best, do we have a crime? Because we have to take these things very seriously. Do we have a crime? Or do we have something else that we need to provide services to this kid? In this particular case, it did not raise to the level of a crime, but now we've started the process, working with the schools, working with mental health, we know who the kid is, we can monitor the situation, we can ensure that he's getting the right care, all that kind of stuff. So I think we're moving in the right direction in that regard. So that's a success story, in a very, what is a very challenging environment. Yes, sir?
I've taken that Citizens Patrol, I think of that course, extremely, extremely informative. They give me an insight as to what really goes on in the police department and how it operates. And I've been to the call center as well, extremely, extremely impressed by how efficient that is run. I advise everyone to take that program, it's extremely informative.
Right, so we're talking about the Citizens Police Academy, which we offer about every other year or so in one of our south districts. So if, when we do offer that again, we'll make sure we get that information out, because that's the feedback that we always get, people are just blown away by what really happens in the county and what we're doing. So it's a good way to communicate and build relationships with the county.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, my spouse and I own a business in Lake Worth Beach, and Captain Bear is the bomb. We love him, he's done such a great job, he's a hometown boy, and he has worked so hard and so successfully in cleaning up our homeless situation and our sober home situation, and now your great work is helping to clean up John Prince Park. I don't know if that's in your district or what, but...
Lake Worth Beach is, that's one of my areas.
But the park is not.
But the park is not, that's in unincorporated, like, West Palm, Lake Worth, and that's another region.
But even before Captain Bear, Lieutenant Moss was in Lake Worth, and now he's Captain Moss. And so you all have done a great job in rearing up the next leadership. My question is, I'm running for supervisor of elections, and so I'm kind of biased in this question. What provisions do inmates in the stockade or in the prison have to vote, not only in the primary, but in the general election? I'm not talking about convicted felons at this point, I'm just talking about people who have been misdemeanors, or that have not made bail, and they're sitting in prison.
So first off, thank you very much about the Lake Worth, that's, in the homeless topic, we can talk about more of that if you like as well, it's just, it's such a challenging thing for communities all over the country. And if anybody has, can you still hear me, is this still working? If anybody has a magic answer to that, please let me know. So as far as jails go, so first off, I don't work in our correction side, so I'm a little limited in that information, I'll preface that. One thing you may not know is that in jail, a county jail, houses individuals that are arrested and waiting for trial. So those are individuals that either have been afforded a bond to get out and couldn't, for whatever reason, post that bond, or their crimes were so serious that they weren't afforded a bond, and they're going to trial. So it's more of a place to enter people and process them, and most of the time, they come back out. So it's more of a revolving door and a... So it's more of a revolving door in a jail. And then the other part of a county jail are those people who are convicted of something that their sentence is less than a year, less than a year. If they're convicted of a crime that's beyond a year, they go to state prison, and that's a totally different ballgame, that has nothing to do with us. So in essence, the county jail, for the most part, is taking people in, processing them, getting them through the court system, getting them out. So there really shouldn't be anybody there more than a year after a conviction. So my understanding is that there is a process to make sure that those individuals are afforded their lawful right to vote. But I will preface that by saying, that's not my area of expertise, and we can certainly get clarification from the correction side.
Great question. Any other questions?
One more.
One more. Okay, well, this will be the last question.
Thank you. I'm wondering, is Palm Beach Sheriff's Office cooperating with ICE detainer requests? So holding people for ICE pickup, or providing information about people who are in custody?
So a couple kind of broad-brush statements on that, and you being in Lake Worth Beach, you probably have seen this too. We have worked, and Sheriff Bradshaw has been clear on this, we have worked very diligently to create an environment in Palm Beach County where our residents feel comfortable calling us, regardless of their immigration status. We want our residents to call us if they're a victim of a crime, if they feel unsafe, we want them to call us. So we have to maintain that relationship, that trust with them, so that they feel that if we call them, we're there to address their crime. We don't ask their immigration status when someone calls us or when we interact with them. That's not a question that we ask. If someone has a warrant, let's say, a federal warrant, or a state warrant, or something for a crime, we would arrest them just like we would anybody else. Their immigration status really doesn't come into play. If ICE or a federal agency like that calls us because there's an officer safety issue, or they're making an arrest on somebody who has a serious warrant, or something to that degree, and they call us for backup because it's an officer safety issue, and we just have people, sure, we're going to help them, because we don't want anybody to get hurt. But we're not out doing anything more than that. I hope that answers your question. All right, well, I want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great for the opportunity. Round of applause, thank you so much, you did a great job.